Call meeting in order. Live.
Yeah, you're good to go.
Okay. So, good evening, everyone, and we're welcoming to the special call meeting, City of Barstown, City Council. It's a special meeting because as a result of COVID-19 state of emergency, in accordance with the opinion forty dash two oh five of the Attorney General, we cannot have physical location for the public, from the media, to view the meeting. So, this special meeting will be broadcast in public viewing on Barstown cable TV channels nineteen point two and twenty and twenty point one. So, welcome all the viewers who might be viewing it this evening, and I understand it should be recorded and put some data to be viewed at a later date. So, we're going to go on into the agenda. COVID-19 update, somebody may or may not be aware, but according to Lincoln Trail Area Health, the second case, positive case, a person in Nelson County has been identified. And the good news is they're not hospitalized, they're quarantined at home. So, that being said, I just want to emphasize that we cannot let our guard down. This is still a very, very serious matter. In fact, there's not a lot of cases out here. But we know if there's a being, there's not a lot of cases that are going to be here once testing gets wrapped up. That seems to be the common denominator that has seen some of the states and cities where the testing has wrapped up. The numbers are escalating quite a bit in the within a twenty hour period. So, I wouldn't say I'm very proud of the response from everyone who was involved with trying to make sure the public health is being taken care of as best they can and the end of the meeting. I won't go into a lot about what's happened in the past. The media did a pretty good job reporting on everything that we gave them last week. Day-to-day operations are, I think, going pretty smoothly. We've got our staff adequate enough to operate the city under normal circumstances. Many people are working from home and a lot of people working from home and rotating shifts so we can kind of keep people from having to leave as close to each other as possible. Trying to protect departments from not having to kind of park and be quarantined. Started four public works man this week, being cross-trained with the water treatment plant and sewer plant. So, in the event that there is a shortage of personnel, those two plants will have some backup to support them. So, I guess the next phase we're working on is, you know, some of these steps we've been taking is to, what do we do in the event that we start having shortages? And so, working on that. We're also taking a hard look at the financial impact, and we'll probably talk a little bit about that when we're paired against his report. Budgeting, obviously, is really throwing a curve to us of how we can possibly budget things and forecasting how we might be affected in this last quarter. But we think that by mid-April and at the end of April, we'll have some data that might tell us how things might go in the next several months. Until we get this thing under control. I know Jessica shared with me today that, to this point, we haven't seen a major change in water usage and sewer treatment and electric and those sort of things. But we know that might change in the next month or so. Of course, the governor announced more closings Sunday evening, which will affect that yesterday. So, I think the main message there is, you know, we need everybody to cooperate as best they can. The governor set up a tip line, we're getting the call, they think people are not cooperating. I know we get a number of people contact the city as well as the county, the police, fire department. They feel like somebody might not be adhering to the social distancing rules. Last week, we had word that there was a large group of young men playing basketball in our city park. It was happening, but the police went there and said, explains well that the governor's orders is you can't gather in large groups. You can't have soccer games and basketball and so forth. And we made that announcement, you know, late last week, but not everybody is, you know, has access to the same media as we do. But once the case explained the situation to the young men, they dispersed in an orderly fashion and cooperated. So, that's good. And we just hope that it continues because when we have to send people to check those things out today, the fire chief and assistant chief had to go. Again, it was a non-compliance issue, and also it was violation of the fire code. So, during your time, the police, fire chief, assistant chief on the business that was, appeared to be trying to circumvent the governor's order. But we'd rather have these people, you know, spend their time working on what they do every day, and that's to protect public health and safety. Oh, and with that being said, there's, I got a call earlier this morning from the media wanting to know if we closed the parks. Because I guess word got out, social media last night, the police shut down the basketball game at the park. We haven't closed the park there, or any of our parks. We have, we have been ready to announce Friday that parks are open. For normal people who want to bring their children and use the equipment, walk the trails or whatever. We are sanitizing all the playground equipment daily and picket tables, that sort of stuff, and being safe there. So, normal, you know, gathering, if you want to take your children to the park and have them play, or that sort of thing is being done. We had heard that volleyball rams have to close all their parks because they weren't getting cooperation under the community. But we don't want to go there because we don't believe some of this recreational opportunities are far from being. Checking those notes. I talked with Jennifer Nolan at the hospital today, and, you know, I think the financial support, as we talked about her challenges and challenges in the community, you know, businesses. Unfortunately, I don't think the supplies for health providers, vaccines, respirators, that sort of stuff, we've got to get. And the volumes they need as fast as maybe what a congressional camp like they need financially for this movement. She says, overall, things are going pretty well at the hospital. I think as a result of this second, second person tested positive, they are changing their visitation policy effective this evening at the hospital. Basically, no visitation, with some exceptions, that people, obviously, parents of newborn child, someone who is gravely ill, that sort of thing. There might be a few exceptions. But she didn't say it was okay to be announced that there was still more visitation open at the hospital than where they had. They previously had one person at a time. That's changed. I just want to finish up. I say a second shipment of EPE, personal protective equipment, is, should be here in the next few days. So, that's helping our first responders and helping the hospital and helping some of the doctors short of the respiratory. Masks are available, the downs are available, that sort of thing. Jennifer did say that some people have approached her about maybe masks, help supply the hospital, they can receive some. She said, we're welcome that. If any other people or organizations want to do so, please contact the hospital and let them know that you may help, help them with their supply of masks. Yeah, we've done this in this room. I believe we've been through a pandemic, or great depression. You know, our country and our state have been through that before. So, I think we will get through this. It's going to be a lot of pain. You have to come. You just have to be prepared for it. But again, I appreciate all the cooperation. You just have to take a deep breath and try to deep con, be not afraid, and I will say those, and just be safe. So, that's the update on that. If anybody has, don't really have open discussion available for that. And I just wanted to give you all an update, and perhaps the community out there who's watching this evening. So, okay, we'll move on into the agenda. And Jessica's had several presentations sitting in front of us here with the back to the camera. Jessica, who actually runs our city attorney, excuse me, the city engineer, will go through our one fifty utility relocation agreement. You don't have to read the entire agreement, but. See, I think a couple of meetings about it, but I'll let you just kind of give a note of that.
This is a standard utility agreement that the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet does when they're doing capital improvement projects in communities where utilities are affected. So, the project in this agreement is addressing improvements to US one fifty at Highway two forty-five, where two forty-five intersects with US one fifty and extends to Parkway Drive. And they're going to be making improvements to the intersection of Penn and Maywood and kind of finishing out where Melissa Bellaro finishes. So, that's the extent of the project. And obviously, the city of Barstown has some water reins, some sewer facilities, sewer forceings. And this agreement basically is an agreement between us, the city, and the state Transportation Cabinet. And the Transportation Cabinet is taking our financial responsibility of any relocation to those utilities meant that are necessary. And in this particular project, because the scope is pretty small, they are adding some fill material, but they're not drastically changing the, it's going to affect our utilities. There's not any major relocation. We want to be adding some additional protection over their utility lines with additional casing to provide protections of it to try to minimize breaks during that construction process. While the build is being added, those lanes of flat lanes are being widened. But that's predominantly the extent of what this agreement is. Any inspection, because there isn't even so brittle of that, there's not even a separate inspection going to be involved with the Transportation Cabinet. So, they will not be communicating during with us when the contractors in those immediate partnerships to our utility lines will be keeping in contact and our other forces will be keeping an eye on that work. So, that's essentially what this mini-page agreement is saying in a nutshell. Is that their contractor will be doing some minor things to our utilities, and that they are agreeing to pay for those financially.
So, is anyone having other questions? Jessica, this is a sense of typical agreement, sure is a long agreement, a very small amount of our infrastructure that's not really going to be impacted.
Not a lot, no.
I guess, Jessica, I know that there are a couple of projects that you have going on as far as our infrastructure changes in that particular area. Is that, will that facilitate doing any of that any sooner, or is that going to help us with this particular project?
No, this particular project is not really coming into our, where we're planning to make those improvements. We're kind of outside of this, not this disturbing for projects. There's another project that's coming that is being still in the design phase of still looking at right away acquisition that the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet is doing along the US one fifty corridor from Barstown on the way to Springfield. And I know there's been some public meetings that have actually had to be postponed due to our current COVID-19 pandemic. But that project, again, may impact some, but again, I think we're still several years out before we even have a final design for that particular project. So, that will not, I'm looking to find ways to lay that, it shows a water ring that we're hoping it doing for a loop to the Parkway Flat area, and I'm hoping to try to find a route that is going to minimize impact to that U.S. one fifty project so that we're not duplicating. But again, until they completely decide where that route is, I don't know just how much.
Jessica, do we know it's not part of the plan, like, doing everything?
And the initial plan back when we met at Lincoln Trail and the Transportation Cabinet was to be letting this project, second, it was going to be in the mid-lady. In light of current circumstance, I'm not sure what the Transportation Cabinet's plans are for the ground lighting. Is that going to continue as scheduled, or if there's going to be a postponement that may happen, maybe in this late summer instead of. I have a little doubt on.
Yeah, because they had that follow-up meeting to set this month that they postponed to the virus situation to announce. I guess they're out of choice. Postponed to ask them. I guess they'll have to add that before they do the later.
Were you referring to the larger, the Peter Portal project, or just this one or do you want to? This project, again, was originally set to let the spring early summer, but I'm not sure if that's.
Sure. So, what you mean that Jessica, you either motion that the mayor decided to approve the statement?
That's correct.
Tradition that.
Design authorized, signature, and execute.
No, no, that says you have questions. I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the, the executed agreement, the city and state. Okay, we have a motion, my counsel, Shekels, to authorize mayor to execute this agreement for the relocation. And a second.
Second.
Second, my counsel, Williams, is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Jessica, let's go to the Bursheer, Adelaide, some requests.
Yes, on the north side of Bursheer, there was a proposal for some condominiums called Esthetor Construction. And as part of that development plan, there was a need for approximately two hundred fourteen feet of sewer main extension to properly serve that on those condominiums. So, this is a service request asking for the city to take in this portion of the, upon completion, the sewer main into our public infrastructure system. And so, we need that approval and authorization to go to the Division of Water, that we will, in fact, take that in upon its completion and meeting all applicable specifications and patents.
Is that working? Like, we haven't been improving any of that sewer infrastructure on that street for a while. You know, we keep talking about, if those projects come along, that's something we're going to look at, correct?
I think.
Will they even get, will they even affect the portion that we would change anyway?
I've been working pretty diligently these last few months, looking at, evaluating our municipal infrastructure and trying to finalize plans for our phase one of our downtown improvements for water and wastewater, sewer improvements. Some of the sewer improvements online actually look pretty good, and we just need to do some rehab or point repair of the sections. And in fact, because of some of the improvements in this quadrant of town, this is actually in our phase one area. So, there's going to be some water improvements, again, to try to help improve in this area, some fire protection needs as well as looking at some minor changes or improvements to the sewer in this area. So, yes, you're correct, and we have tried to facilitate our timing of that, of that work to minimize any immediate impact that this development, you know, to create not having that of sewer full office for this.
Are they, are they coming? Because we can come, we just going to be on the north side of the street, or the south side?
I think there's a phase two plan, or there was a plan to have, kind of is on the south side as well. That plan just hasn't been submitted for at this time.
Just north side?
Yeah, this is just the north side.
They, I think, though, they could actually go two different directions on the sewer, I'm correct, on that? So, the north side, the south side would not.
Right, they would be different, they would not be the same. Right, so this would be going to sewer main in the rear, it would be actually to the north in that alley. And on the south side, there's a sewer main in that alley that, or again, there's some minor improvements that would be.
So, our sewer, our alleys are, where are our sewers located now then?
Most of them.
Close up.
And that was my question, as far as this sewer main extension is concerned, that's still going to be maintained on our city right-of-ways, correct?
Well, this extension, this extension is actually within the property, and there are sewer easements dedicated to this because there's not a continuation of an alley currently recorded. It's only running east and west and not north and south on the north side of Bursheer. I think it comes down from Beale to the cross alley and stops, and there's not currently a recorded alley that extends all the way to Bursheer. So, there, there is an extension, again, to provide service in turn. But that will be within an easement, just like you would have a utility main that would serve a condominium complex in other parks, like the Wintor Gardens.
Yeah, the questions on this particular request. What I would ask for, motion to approve the request from Chateau Construction to be accepted into our infrastructure. Please, motion. Motion, our counsel, Budman, just to second, defense of woman, part, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion is carried. Okay, Jessica, then the next one's Main Street and subdivision, sewer west of Rich Boulevard.
Yes, this is the final portion that's currently unplugged in the cul-de-sac of Rich Boulevard. So, they kind of had final plugged in all of the other blocks along Rich Boulevard, but this portion in, around the cul-de-sac, they didn't have a final development plan for until this is built. And they are continuing with similar style buildings. And it is requiring, again, to properly serve that, it's a very short extension of the sewer to properly have enough tax and connection points to, to serve, to serve that layout. It's only sixty-four feet sewer main extension, but again, that does require for us to take that into the system to go to the Division of Water Application and to go through this process. Again, we've already reviewed the plans, you know, everything is meeting our current standards and specifications. And you'll have to follow all that, all those processes and inspections and testing before we take it.
And that is development expansion?
Yes.
Any other, any other questions on this request? If not, I would ask for motion, then, excuse, excuse me, to approve the request. I see it means to have this last section of Rich Boulevard, definitely accepted into our sewer main extension. So, motion, our counsel, begins, a second.
Second.
Second, my counsel, Shekels, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Motion is carried.
Jessica, I think they're finished with this, thank you. I guess the Lord has got work. Oh, you're fine. Forgot, you and the guys one or three.
Yes. On the agenda is a professional service agreement proposed by Kentucky Engineering Group for services that I have requested to do the final planning and design for a chemical feed that we have currently at our wastewater treatment facilities. We are trying to look for ways to get rid of our risk management for really high hazardous chlorine gas at the Town Creek Plant. And so, we've been trialing this PAA, which makes the peric acid, which is a disinfectant before, that we must do to the wastewater before we discharge it to our water treatment complex. In fact, get before it discharges to the stream. One of the benefits of having, going to this essentially peric acid, rock side-based disinfectant is that you also don't have to be chlorine. So, we eliminate a second chemical feed. So, we currently are, had been feeding chlorine and then also feeding a dechlorination. More names can go wrong. So, this is an attempt, and we've been doing really well, meeting our permit limits at both treatment facilities. And we have some setup already, but a minute or more, we've been more permanent setup and equipment in tanks for a better long term. Even pricing for the chemical, the larger, you can get that delivered in bulk, you get a better price for new it. So, that's what I'm moving towards, about an extension through the Division of Water for our trial. And knowing that we've been working to kind of finalize and get some plans, kind of doing a lot of research too on where the chemicals come from, visiting all the green wastewater facilities and how they're set up and what's working and things they would do differently. I always like to do that, talk with other people. We've made a switch and learned our lessons learned. And Kentucky Engineering Group has provided this service agreement for the design. And then you can see their, what their fees would be, they're proposing to help us with our construction administration. The council doing inspection, wanting to be a part of contractor and going into those critical phase in inspections for that. So, if the council would, I would ask that they, you guys approve us standing into this service agreement.
Questions?
Jessica. I just, I have one question, and Jessica's very timely that this comes up, and I actually had these questions when this came on the agenda. Jessica's way ahead of me, as usual. But one of the things, you know, I'm doing some research as far as our incredible, great water system that we have. And, you know, the, the, the looking ahead, the city and Jessica, in particular, you know, with our sanitization program, we have a little water changing for me, that's, that's actually a very, you know, very fortunate thing we have currently. And it's, it's, the longer that we can get the water sanitized, the better, which is what this new system does. My question has to do with wastewater. And with this COVID-19 outbreak, one of the things that, you know, currently comes up is how are you handling the wastewater and waste stream and then the monitoring of free, available chlorine in that treatment process, you know, and make sure that it's not depleted? Because you can, you know, in some means, transfer that, that system's not, it's not. treatment process, you know, and make sure that it's not depleted because you can, you know, in some means transfer that, that system's not, it's not. So does this have something to do with that as far as upgrading that system or changing to a different chemical block? How do we monitor, I guess, are we constantly monitoring that free chlorine and if we change to this new system, how does that compare? I guess is my question.
Right, this is specific to our wastewater treatment facilities and again, I keep sure that we're killing any bacteria in the water before discharge. Again, I keep sure that it has time to, if there's not actually a chlorine residual left in the water by the time it's the stream. We don't want to have uh kill any microbiology or what, what. So we're always in this very uh narrow balance, trying to make sure that we are killing what we need to in maintaining those uh residuals and then also making sure that there's not any left when everybody discharges, kind of short span. Um this actually is, again, we don't have to do two chemicals, but if it does provide, we do back T samples or to uh decolub, running the lab at the wastewater plant. And prior to the switch, we were running a free chlorine residual as well. And that's when you're adjusting your chemicals and always watching, you know, what your influent rates are, your discharge rates are, adjusting your fee accordingly, whether you've got stuff after big storms sometimes or um, or it's been really dry. You get usually sprayed by, you get wet turnover, things, things happens in our open, so we have to kind of keep an eye what that does to what we need to treat and, and for our discharge permit limits. Um so this does help with that. Um we still are making sure that we have to meet our discharge permits for, we hear decolub rates, we have to make sure that that is maybe that minimum number. And the good thing, this dissipates pretty fast as well and it's an opposite. So whenever it makes it to the stream, there's less likely for any uh negative impact to that fly block. Where's chlorine, it's, it's, well, it disinfects really well, but if your pump goes out on yet and starts, you know, not calibrating right or starts overfeeding for some reason, you, you can end up with uh an issue with the stream. So this is, the Division of Water has been really positive to this uh transition because again, they can give it is more environmentally friendly uh means to disinfect um and we are still following those dis- disinfection guidelines and making sure that any harmful bacteria is taken care of before we're, we're discharged into the stream. So we still have those permits that were having needed. That's one reason I'm ready to pull the trigger on this because we've now had a year and a half of data that shows that we can do this successfully.
Okay, and, and my question is really three parts.
Okay, what is it?
Second, the second, that's the second part. Uh is there any concern especially with the supply chain interruption? Is there any concern of running out of needed chemicals at the water treatment or sewer treatment plant currently?
We've been in communication because again, a lot of the chemicals are ordered almost about every two weeks. You know, we're getting chemicals delivered to both our water treatment facility. Um sometimes the wastewater goes a little, can go a little longer, uh depending on what the employees and where our flow rates are. Um but so far, every supplier has been able to um meet those supply demands and has ensured us that they're following all of the safety recommendations and the distancing requirements. I think there's some policies where people are maybe not coming into the plant directly, they're coming to the door, you know, yeah. And being more careful on how we're interacting with those delivery drivers. But today, everyone, we've been getting emails and communication that right now, we're not having any um issue with either manufacturing or for delivering or uh of, of our chemicals. So far, so good.
Okay, and the last part, and I apologize, I think some, is our workers that are wastewater treatment, um are they, do they have proper PPE? And are they wearing proper PPE at this?
Yes, because of the nature of being at a wastewater treatment plant, they're, everyone's already very conscientious about proper PPE. When you're, they always glove up, you know, they're don't hazardous, you know, chemicals. Keep in mind even the PAA, you don't want to get that on your skin because it, it can really be uh maybe burn all the way through your shirt. So you still have to be very, very careful. It's a step better, you know, less hazardous than chlorine, but again, you still have to be very careful. So again, they're, they're taking samples, they do a lot of things already, so they're, they're pretty accustomed to having their brand it was. They're not gonna be up there hitting one. Uh we have new um micro screens where we're capturing a lot of debris to prevent from getting into those aerators in our wastewater facility. And remember we're talking about how important it was and I wanted to improve the safety of our employees and not have them in those giant boats, on those waboons, trying to derad the aerators, you know, every month. It's just not a very great setup. Um so again, they're always, even I watched them just on Friday, changing out these garbage bags at the end of the uh at the headworks and they're, they're always all looked up, they're in slip through shoes, you're, if they're doing anything, they're just doing a chemical. Again, they're, they're not having to actually be in it, the sampler systems are all contained um in folding jugs that are contained within a sampling device. So they're, they're pretty conscious, I think, they're not really having to do much thi- things differently except for colliding action with one another and with people coming in to do a general service, you know. Something's breaking, you've got to have like service staff.
Nothing happened to be done any differently as far as PPE, as far as viral transmission from, from wastewater streams?
Right, so far we're not uh implementing anything else because again, we already are wearing, wearing gloves, they wear glasses. Um if they're down around doing something, they could be getting uh splashes on them. They oftentimes they have the, the paper jumpsuits they wear, you know, just to kind of protect their clothes and their skin. Um so, so far, they do a pretty good job of, of doing that. So I'm not having to really, um we're not saying they, they need to step that up. We're just reiterating.
Jessica, do they wear masks when performing any of these things?
Uh they generally are not in full masks. Again, it depends on what tasks they're doing. Now, if they are changing over something with respect to hazardous chemicals, they're general, and there's pumps and hoses that can, you know, spray or shoot. They're generally uh have PPE on, um but they're not just going to check to make sure things are moving, they're not necessarily wearing masks just to visually look at something. Again, at the water plant, they have always done a lot of that, more things because again, it's the chemicals, you know, they're dealing with. So they can follow all those processes or, can you follow them? Or just reiterate to be careful.
Just to kind of follow up on that, I've gotten reports from, from the market heads, sanitizing is going on throughout the day. Couple of works doing at ladies' fire departments, you know, the girls and ladies at work, you know, you know, on a constant basis.
And I guess my question is more for, for looking down the road, you know, is, is this, if this does ramp up, we all hope that it doesn't, but if it does ramp up, we need to change anything or any of our, to protect our workers, even, you know, if it's the garbage truck port or if it's the wastewater treatment plant work. Is there anything we need to do looking forward, you know, to increase that, that safety? You know, maybe what we're doing is perfectly fine.
And we're constantly trying to look ahead at now, what is going to happen if X happens? You know, what are we going to be probably gonna handle that? And again, on Friday, when I walked into the Town Creek facility, that place, I immediately asked who is responsible for cleaning this place? And it's usually always here in cleaning, but they do, we're such an old facility, they really do maintain that facility very, very well. And I really asked who cleaned this and can I hire you to clean my own home? Because it was so clean, I mean, everything was disinfected, there was not a piece of paper on the table, you know, everyone was just really. I think that everybody's taking it seriously. Um and again, we're looking ahead truly. There's plenty of space to keep distance away, you know, at the wastewater facilities, they're kind of wide open spaces. And you got one person in the lab, you don't really need a lot of other people in the lab with you. And but again, trying to cross train, my, our real concern is if we were to have an employee get sick or have to be quarantined for two weeks because a family member is sick. You know, with only two employees at the Town Creek wastewater facility, that really puts a huge burden. And we currently had already experienced retirees and trainees coming in, so we're down to a very limited number of certified operators even to run the facility. So we were trying to crash course training a few folks who might be somewhat familiar with what we do and could pick up on some of those things, just to kind of crash course mediation of your hands and help that same person. Um again, on one hand, they were, at first, they were a little bit um wary about that, but we're trying to stay away from people, right? For any, someone else down here, but I'm trying to look back next to the head. We, we've got a truck garbage guys in uh two person, we're trying to think of ways, can we minimize the time they're sitting together in the cab, you know, do they drop them off at the, at the shop or in, go into the landfills and they're not in a cab that long? Again, I don't think we need to be quite there, but we are trying to think of ways as a, as a city, of how can we continue to provide critical services to the community as, and in the meantime, still keep our employees safe as we can. If you can think of anything that we might be moving out, but only if we're ready, we can, just need to reach out. There's something that you can think of that might be efficient or proactive or be helpful.
And so, so maybe people that are watching and knows us and we understand, you know, this discussion here is only disinfected from the wastewater material. COVID virus activity update is part of our agenda, so this discussion about asking about the safety of the employees is, uh is on the agenda all in under the COVID virus updates. Just so people understand that we're not getting off topic here, so that's, that's paramount. That's why it's the number one item on our agenda this evening. If any other questions on this particular item, I'd ask for motion to approve hiring, like the Engineering Group, ELLC to provide the engineering services for the wastewater treatment plant disinfection approvals. So motion then, counsel Williams, the second, my counsel, the ones, is there any other discussion? C nine, all in favor, say a aye, child opposed, motion is carried. Now, if you're, I'm speaking to the meeting, thank you, thank you Jessica, Jessica, hold up. Doing these things, yes. Right, we need, Chief Bank. Next item is the public committee roof. Particularly, I think, the last day we requested some additional bids because the item was at that time thirty thousand dollar item, wasn't in the original bid for the previous power station, John Rowland. Chief, do you want to walk us through these?
Uh I can, I, you should have three bids for you. Swift has resubmitted another bid, it's a pillow creps, uh building versus city, kind of on the roof. Actually took a core sample, uh there's more material on that roof, so it's gonna be a little more, uh carried at all, a little more landfill. Uh two of them, uh Swift and America, our commercial roofing companies only, they'll do commercial roofs, no, no single roof of any type and so forth. Uh I'm not a good, kind of recommended also, maybe a little bit of all different types of roof, residential and commercials. We try to keep it as close to apples to apples as we can. I'm sorry, uh you know, these questions today on, on security things and hopefully we'll be able to answer all of your questions. One of them has on here, size of the gutter. One of them put down like six inches and one of them put down millimeters. And they're both are the same type of gutters, commercial gutters, just uh for a while. Bill tells me is, the commercial gutter is always so many millimeters thick. And if it's residential, it's gonna be less and stuff, so everything's pretty much apples to apples. Swift is a distributor, installer for Firestone. Firestone will only allow certain people to do their roofs and they have to go through a certain type of training. And Firestone actually sets representative now to verify the roof that's being installed properly.
Maybe I might depend on David and Joe for this. I'm not sure, it's the first deal which is unlimited is less expensive. I'm, I'm just something I don't think I see installation on that.
It's there, it's, it's, it's actually their installation standard is two inches and the others is quarter inch and a half. Um the difference that I see there, and you know, may, you know, they catch me on this, but I don't see where they quoted or included in quote the cost of the replacement of the deck. Uh that's the only quote that did dress up and did give a, give a monetary value, what it would take to replace per square foot.
And that, that did kind of got priced.
You did, it's four dollars. Okay, so it's comparable to, and that's included in this bid, in the twenty-five?
And that would be additional.
It would be additional, that's right. Well, but additional at four dollars per square foot, at least. There's one of the six.
One of the six and the other.
That was like six feet.
Four, four feet maybe.
Okay, so that, that is really the only discrepancy I see that I saw in the bid is actually the, the unlimited, as I said, as a, as a two inch IPO, uh where the others were four inches and a half.
He, he also included the place, it's called the two by four wood boards around the pyramid. The other guy, that's also a part of, that's an extra for them if they needed to do it. He is, he's quoting quotes. There is a big discrepancy and I actually hope that I didn't cross my boundaries, but I, I've actually dealt with unlimited on several of the DPO roofs. And uh so I asked him, I didn't talk numbers, I just said, the other discrepancy of these prices, and he felt very comfortable with this quote. And he said, no, I'm fine, so.
You said it's four dollars per foot?
Yes.
Uh well, you know, that's the only one, if they find, if they find, so it's kind of giving them a blank check. If we didn't have this one for the price to replace, so it's just, the roof's probably thirteen two hundred square feet according to this. I ran the numbers, if you look at, Tecta's six dollars a square foot, it's nineteen thousand two hundred, if you have to do all thirteen two hundred square feet. Whereas with Swift, if you're at four fifty, then you're at fourteen thousand four hundred, so you're about five thousand dollars difference there. And it would be even a little less, you know, unlimited with four, it had four dollars.
It, 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 it works probably to, to compare, but just be very spotty.
And that still doesn't make up the differences in the quotes, right? I mean, that's a, that's a.
Another thing I liked about the unlimited was, I think it was possible to be walk there. And they've actually, they, they got an option, I think we should talk about, of include that, then you got, virtually have a stainless roof. Your cap to the, uh where now it doesn't.
That's the termination bar, right? That, that's included in the price.
It is, no, no, it's, it's, it's eighteen hundred dollars, you see in the very last one.
Very last one. Okay, covering the wall.
Covering the wall, it is. And I think if not, that stops with silicone, that, and to me, that's just a massive rival problem.
And the others didn't mention even the, the termination bar.
Right.
Uh and that's actually taking the DPO out of that retaining law, that is, they did not mention that in the other book. So they would throw that eighteen hundred dollars to this twenty-nine, yeah.
I, I think that would be money well spent.
Absolutely.
So you all again, that's the, the quote plus the possibly eighteen hundred dollars.
I think they had everything that we need in there, I mean, as long as that's covered as far as the decker price. And it's, that's a reasonable price on the decker price. I'm in favor of that.
Sounds like.
Another question I have was, uh Unlimited had a twenty year warranty for laboring material. Tecta said the manufacturer's warranty, I don't know, they cover laboring materials standard or?
They just materials.
Not just materials.
That's materials, it's just materials.
Yeah, that can be a cost.
That's the one where they said that the manufacturer had come out and actually looked at, see if they did something wrong, installer, they, they did.
So this credit, who is this? I don't even have to pronounce that name. You want to be inspected by you.
That's the, what I understood they are is the manufacturer of the TPO office.
Yes. But unlimited just specifically said labor material. That'd be on their labor material, but it was involved with, with the material. They had to deal with the manufacturer.
But they would hear.
Correct.
Any other discussion of questions on this? If not, then I'd ask the motion to approve one of the three submittals to replace the roof. This portion of the roof that we've been in our suite.
Mayor, if I may, I would make a motion to approve unlimited restorations. The roof replacement at the new power station, John Rowland, for twenty five thousand two hundred dollars.
What about the eighteen hundred?
Plus the eighteen hundred to include the TPO of the knee wall. That takes up to twenty seven, one seven.
We're going to have a motion to. Senator, you can create without limited restorations for twenty seven thousand dollars to replace that thirty two hundred square feet portion of the roof. Move the fire stations in the second. Second, the second, my house, it is, we have a discussion of questions.
Question, budget wise, what does that put us now as far as? We talked about percentage last week. That would allow us for some additional things that we need, I'll be dealing with them.
We, we have met keys on it and they were saying we're about a little over five percent.
Delta ten? I think they were at delta ten percent.
Yes, yes.
Later on this evening, we've got some, some bills, better bills on our change orders. I'll set some of this. Any other questions? Here we have a motion in the second, Hall of Fame, six months, say yes. I oppose. Motion's carried. Chief, I think we'll just go ahead since you're still here. Why don't we just go ahead and let you do this, and I've made on the change orders. Some of which were approved and some were tabled at the last meeting.
So a couple of the jobs proved at the last meeting afterwards. I had a meeting with Keys Associates and Marcy Barrett Cornet of the job site. They got heated it out of the oven. There were some issues that I didn't feel like we should have to be paying for. That was our mistakes. And one of them was PR number thirteen was the additional steel supports up in the roof after. Keys had said that there should have been a, I guess, imprint type form with the contract paperwork. That was never supplied to them. It's kind of coming back on the keys. That total was three thousand one hundred ninety six dollars. And it sounds like Keys is our sort of that part, that change order. That wasn't one of the jobs proved last, so we should be, do that one, okay. Then, I did, other one was one thousand four hundred sixty five dollars for additional wiring for the heating system in the bay. We found out that the, what was spacked out in the bid was not the manufacturer the heating system sent. It's really, they, they thought, the manufacturer thought it for some reason. Get better system, they shipped it without changing anyone. So Marcy Barrett Cornet is going to get sorted out of that. So that was one of the jobs. A little bit of like that.
And I called Charlie Keys, I think they, after our last meeting, discussed these. Said table some, we approved some risks of reservations. I think, again, it goes back to what he spoke to, about some communication issues like these change orders got submitted directly to us about contracting that most people submitted to the architect. He said, I, he agreed that he understood why the question. It's a, it's a solid, we see, they have agreed to sort this.
I thought those two were ones that would be tabled, not ones that would be approved. The ones that were just mentioned were approved, they could be tabled, the additional over empty bars. The area. That, that's not needed, so that, that would be asked completely. The plug would be water cooler, that was a water cooler. That's, that's.
That's weird. That's too boring.
So we had heard of those with conditions, I guess. Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Okay, so sixteen, seventeen, eighteen.
That's what our money decided on. The sixteen, seventeen. So it sounds like we've not seen cooperation on most of the contractors. Contract with this moment. It's changes. Any other questions? So that's. Is there a download?
Just keep my, my plan, right? Of course, of course.
Wait, wait, hold it. Looking for a place.
Any else in place of chief on this project? Change orders. Thank you, chief.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Before you would go to do this, this project, it's obviously the bid tab and crime and here. Discuss. Sure. So we received this new Christ bid for little TV and fiber construction for in town. We've talked about for a while now without needing to rebuild the in town area, starting off with that. And replacing the coax so we can provide additional angles to grow. Get on into a system that has office making. So the highlighted items are the things that we basically are heavily weighted. Meaning those are the items that, that the contractor is doing the most. So, so the first one is overlap fiber, overlap each additional fiber, de-lash, re-lash, de-lash, re-lash additional fiber. So this is basically using the existing plant, outside plant and adding the fiber to it. And using that as a means to connecting each customer's home to a grid through the fiber network and occupant. So I, we had four bidders. And out of all four bidders, Hutchinson Telecom has the best enterprise out of all of them. Especially on items that we care about. And so that's, that's the, that's the bid that we recommend for this project.
I think, how, we, we, I talked about this, this is, this is a work that part of which will start about this budget here, except when we carry that over to the next budget here, so we do want to stick to that.
So yeah, so we, our goal is to rebuild in town over two years, starting like you said, the tail of this year. Going on, that's two more than four years. Majority of our plant is aerial, I think two mile. So that's kind of what this one addresses is the majority of those that might be constructing the connections to the home. But yeah, it's, it's, it's an overall legal project that we're planning to rebuild everything in town. Provide a very option to them to one.
So is this bid, this bid tag just for those four items? It's not for any of the rest on, on this bid tag? So they win the bid based on average? Cause I noticed there's some of them that are lower. They want to bid based on the average of everything?
Yeah, they're, they're, by all of the rules across everything that we care about. They are, on those three items that we care about, they're on some of the numbers. But they, they, they also, we've seen their work in the past. They do a good job. So we feel comfortable.
That's what I was going to ask. I know you've got some like Navy resources, official, unofficial. They, that's some of the bid, but you're saying because this is telecom. Had more cost savings than some of the others who wanted to award them the whole contract.
That's correct. They're, for, they all weighted a little different. Three items that are highlighted on the left there are what we're going to be doing the most. And so for the total project, it would be, it would actually be coming lower than what we estimated for the aerial project.
Oh, well, they're, they're actually considered a local company.
Yes.
They did a lot of work for us already. Has been superior.
Both local companies.
Superior job.
Any other questions on this bid tab and recommendation from? Cable engineer, engineer to approve Hutchinson Telecom.
I want to ask a question just to educate the place. Sure. So on the item that is the lashing wire repair. Where Super Tech has it at twenty eight dollars. Yes, then Hutchinson's has it at one twenty five. Yes, is that part of this project, but it's just not one of the things that we're going to deal with?
Yeah, there's not a lot of repairs to do. We should just overlap the whole thing. So even though there's been, there's a difference there, I think that's important. It's an overall project. It's not a.
So is it customary to ask Hutchinsons if we can afford them the whole bid to meet the price that's superior or something in the other areas? Or is that not customary?
Usually we all split the gross.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't make this, but I'm just saying, could you take this to Hutchinsons and say, for this particular item, can you meet superior's cost? No, no, that's not customary.
Yeah, that's, that, you know, after, definitely, definitely come back to this, you know, say, or not this one.
You can do it all if you, this case.
I don't know if that would be fair to the other companies, so. You allow them to come down the price.
I think it's going all the way to the entire project. It's one of these that are, that we use, I think, is what dealers, he's told us that they would. And Hutchinson's vote as the, as the expert sponsor of that's. I would ask the motion to include the recommendations for Hutchinson Telecom to buy the services for their. Would you scrap the rebuild of our, is having the coax cable and fiber go on? Motion for the summer, motion, Councilman Dunn is in the second. Second, I think, Councilman in the heart. Any other discussion of questions? Hall of Fame, say yes. Oppose? Motion's carried. Thank you, Coach. Now we have a correspondence. We have a couple of donation requests. And I think you all note that there is updating this, there's seven thousand dollars remaining in this year's line item for our community development by grants. First one is from Barstow, that's Karen, African American Heritage Museum, I think it's Councilman Williams.
Yes, this is it. Thank you, Mayor. We were going to bring in a heavier tonight, but she didn't make it. She did want to speak to him, she is really passionate about this museum. Not too long ago, at the Union Church, we were trying to determine what to use the space at the bottom for. And Councilman Chekels came up with the idea of putting an African American museum. Not just Barstown, but Nelson County. And so we formed a board of directors, which I'm one member of. By the way, after I answered some questions and speak to this, when we vote on this, I wouldn't excuse myself. Obviously conflict of interest. But we were thinking of different categories, you know, athletes, religion, education, politics, nineteenth century, personalities, black civic organizations, black business owners and other categories. And after looking at the display we had in our main hallway, we came to the determination that it'd be better if we had these displays here, because we could in fact change categories or as we give additional materials, we can change some of the displays. And so we just felt like it would most certainly be a benefit to this community. As far as we know, we don't have anything in Barstown or Nelson County that really, I like the African American contribution. And we felt like it would be an asset to our community. So that's why we're making that request.
Did you see what we moved up the street?
Oh, well, that's, yes. Oh, okay. But I should test her later and her being here too. I appreciate it. She would want to cry. She's been working, like I said, hand in hand with us, showing us how to display documents, how we display them for a year. Then you put them in dark storage for two years. She's shown us how to scan stuff. So she's very, very hands on. Well, she's been up there with us as well, so.
Okay, thank you, Coach. Any other questions for the coach? Councilman Chekels on the request. I've asked for motion then to approve the request from Barstown, Nelson County African American Heritage Museum for a donation of twenty five hundred dollars. For the construction and acquisition of these display cases.
I'd be very happy to make a motion, Mayor.
Motion for Councilman Hens, the second, for Councilman Dunn. The record showed that Councilman Williams is going to be accused of.
I'm not going to say.
Saying this is standard accused. They will stand.
Whenever they come, I'll be mandatory fully reading the agreement. I'm standing.
Okay, so that's record show that Councilman Williams, Councilman Stumpf say. We have a motion in the second, some Hall of Famers, say yes, say yes. Oppose? Motion's carried. Thank you. Thank you all for all of that work. It's great addition to our community. I think our community provides itself on our history. Resting on our history, still trying to.
Now we're.
You got time.
Hopefully I'll have a time.
Hopefully it was listening, thank you.
Thank you. And then, I think it's, Councilman in the heart, you have a request from Barstow Village.
I do. Then sticking with Catholic, you move on.
Um, then speaking with Catholic Mulan, um, they are in need of some funds, uh, that's immediately is what you can get control. Uh, they're asking for ten thousand dollars. They, uh, project, given their, their current situation and the fact that they won't be able to open, uh, in the spring like they normally do right away, that they'll be out of funds in about two to three months. Uh, they won't have the funds to pay their utilities, their insurance, their maintenance, and their lawn care. She did very politely remind me that, uh, most of the areas around the village is city property. The property where the cabins are, is city property. The property, correctly, my momma was where the actual museum and the building behind it belong to the park and parks. And then on either side, this is what PBA showed today, either side is city property. So obviously, we want to keep that property as, uh, looking as good as possible. There's a lot of green space down there. And then I, I just kind of looked at the economic impact of tourism based on twenty-eighteen stats that I found online today, and they have, not counting all of their school groups, they have about ten thousand dollars, ten thousand visitors a year. And, uh, according to the state, the impact is sixty-eight dollars and forty-two cents per person. Now, you know, some of these might be also visiting the park in their cross, uh, referencing, so to speak, both. Facilities, but if we just look at the ten thousand people times the sixty-eight dollar and forty-two cents, that's something economically that we don't know how it works. So I'd like for us to support them, you know, whether we need to split it up into fiscal years, somehow, I don't mind doing.
That's not, if, I would, I would have, I would have a problem with the, cause I know the impact that, that whole block area, that, that tourism, that, when we want to expand it, it's, it's years will go on. Being able to have like a few dollars left in this month, we could take the four thousand dollars out of this, uh, this, this year's budget, nineteen, twenty budget, and it's okay, we can also just, or within six thousand, I'll definitely choose, but, uh, we're decided to keep the location request, but we haven't managed.
Yeah, but then, then the other side of this is, and also some of them, particularly going about as the closures, you know, that have been done, that's a state emergency that our state and our city and county are all again at this time, so it's, it's a little bit of burdening, and then, um, to Councilman Chekels' question, I think we could have the motion, uh, be even four thousand dollars in this budget here, six thousand dollars addition upon us being able to put the saving of our money in the community development program next budget. I think that's still okay, but it's kind of hard to predict today, so I think that would be the addition of that motion.
Yeah, that's, that's, uh, that's what I said, if, if that was court, Bush was, that could, that could.
That would still leave five hundred dollars in our current fund, and we have another question, whether an organization may be for something that's not, like, significant as that's right. I'm sure they would appreciate it. But I, I don't think this motion. Motion then to divide four thousand dollars in this current budget year and up to six thousand dollars in the next budget year, divided with the, uh, community development block grant funds, same as it is this year.
Same.
Motion for Councilman Chekels and the second, Councilman Williams. Is there any other discussion?
Just, maybe I'm way off base here. There's, if there's not any other way to be able to find this fund somewhere else to meet their needs, because we're not gonna, they're, they're not be able to meet their needs with a motion here. Doesn't appear to be. Uh, and just for example, I mean, would, would our council contingency fund be considered for, uh, could we do that or not?
I think, yeah, I think your fund is, I don't think the call, what the balance is, and we've taken any money from that. Aaron, could you answer that?
So the American contingency has nine thousand remaining, and that council's contingency has ten thousand remaining.
I don't think, we, we didn't use our contingency fund at all last year. Just a lot of it, guys.
I mean, even if you just gave it up to cover this, is this, this negative head income that they have to set for this fiscal year, and is this, they're gonna need that even a month, or?
I don't know the answer to that.
What did you say that?
I just, I mean, they got a negative forty-two thirty-six here, I mean, I'm assuming, uh, this, the four thousand we're granting, and that's not even gonna cover that, you're suggesting just add it like that?
Yeah, I think you said maybe we ought to consider using some of these contingency funds to cover the whole amount. Four thousand now, I'm not willing to tell a press, but it would be good.
Well, I would, I was, I mean, just maybe to get them out of trouble, uh, with contingency fund and then possibly add the, the rest on the next fiscal year. Is that what you, you didn't have that amount, you, you're thinking about covering the whole amount?
You're just, you know, already give money away for, you know, budget money, can't, we don't even have it, and, and is that, so like I said, can I have some of that next year too? Can, will that create that money?
So what you're saying is take the four out of the, the donation, but now six out of the, the council's.
We can take some out of the mayor and some out of the council's.
Money is already out, you might be waiting something, but.
And you can take.
First, you've got no time.
Four, three, and three. Take a lot of pressure off the top of that.
Yeah, we're uncertain when you have, I feel like the other, I think since this nine thousand, one of those funds and ten thousand, I mean, you could take three from four to three together and add it to four thousand, or that could potentially be a full ten thousand. So would you want to amend your motion to?
I, I could, I could amend the motion, this, this money's already in our, in this current year's budget, to, uh, take the four thousand dollars out of the donation, uh, the community donation grant, and then take three thousand dollars out of the major contingency fund, and make three thousand dollars out of council's contingency fund, or total of ten thousand dollars, and I would then, uh, grant it to over Barson.
Okay, so we amended the original motion, and I've got motion delivered by Councilman Chekels and the second, my Councilman Williams. Is there any other questions or discussion? I see none, all of the favors, so I'm saying hi. Opposed, motion's carried.
Thank you all.
Okay, uh, anybody had a chance to review the minutes of the last meeting? Really changes or additions or proof there, my, my, just consent. Okay, uh, I'm asking Aaron Bowles, I see a phone come in and put us up there. Councilman Martin, you kind of talked to me about what they were talking about a few weeks ago, but after we probably got really digging into it, what both the fans came out and did since our discussion and also the city, about perhaps extending the, uh, the tax filing deadline, so.
Now, and I misunderstood the question that was asked of me, so it's Form five twenty is what they were referring to.
Yes, that's what I'm talking about, that's the annual.
Yeah, I thought we were just talking about.
I agree too.
I agree too, yes. Okay, so, uh, Aaron, you talk to us about what I'm suggesting that we do to follow footsteps in what the beds are doing, and other cities are doing.
Yeah, um, so with the pandemic upon us, on March twenty, there are distinct tax filing deadlines for all businesses and all individuals from April fifteenth to July fifteenth. Uh, the city requires all businesses to file and have profits from tax return by April fifteen of each year, coincides with the, with the income tax returns. So in light of the IRS changes, and given the fact that our net profits form requires a complete income tax filing, uh, for processing, I very mean that we follow the federal government December, net profits on deadlines, July fifteenth.
And operationally, you can imagine that the, the accountants of the businesses are worried about having the other complete, you know, those have to have, they're going to complete, uh, accurate, that process can actually definitely, you're able, tax.
Now, do we know how much revenue that generates for us, and would we be okay in our country?
So with that, I, you know, if we send it out, I think no penalty, of course, no, I wouldn't require any extension documents, right? It's just a general, full move of the day. Doing this will cost, uh, some of our revenue for this year. I anticipate through this revenue, the budget will be six hundred to seventy thousand a month. This revenue is, uh, comes through our occupational license fee line. As of today, that line has received four point three million dollars income. Uh, that's about seventy-nine percent of our five point five million dollar budgeted line. So as of today, we're outpacing our budgeted projections, just due to the fact that the trauma economy, that's broken payrolls in the city. I don't think we're gonna see that full drop, and I think we still have a good chance of beating the five and a half million. Still kind of open air of how this last month unemployment rate is gonna affect occupational fees.
It's basically got three months, April, May, and June.
Well, that, those won't be, you won't see those.
You won't see that, what's in June.
Yeah, uh, the April, May, and June is filed, it's filed.
Oh, that's important, that's the thing, that, nobody's paying on, that's the basis on the, license fee side.
There are, yes, some of the filers that are, through RSC.
Well, okay, well, you'll have to, even though you backed everything up to July, well, within, in the next year, but.
We're gonna be.
You're gonna see a figure.
Right, right.
So in the first quarter, in the first quarter of the next year's, yes, you'll see, you'll see a bigger increase.
Right.
Because of the.
Right, we're, we're not, we're not waiving the fees of the tax, we're just sending it out in a, in a, basically, based on the next fiscal year.
That was my question, you, you stated a loss of approximately six hundred and seven thousand dollars, but that's not a forgiveness of tax, that's.
Right.
Shifting.
Right, out of fiscal years. But our revenue will be increased.
In the first quarter of next year, next budget. You're basically, yes.
So, so, I think the big, the general fund is where this goes to, so finish out the final order, I think what Aaron was saying there, we were projected by a save the budget amount, so we probably won't take a full hit on, we didn't have to operate, because we're talking about approximately three hundred and seven thousand dollars still coming in. So that kind of makes sense.
At least, yeah. So I'm, I'm, I think we're gonna be very close ending at five hundred and thirty-three.
And we already have one, the general fund, part of it, that's already, uh, found a hundred thousand dollars in savings by postponing some budgetary expenditure until the next budget year, so. Talking roughly, there's four hundred thousand dollars there, uh, still to be applied to support the general fund operation this final quarter, so.
And our cash, our cash position continues to be increasing, I'm sure, it continues to increase along with that, so we're safe financially.
Any other questions, Aaron? Basically, what we're gonna do is, I think, uh, make a motion to postpone the filing for the net profit taxes to July fifteenth, and also, we're gonna get a thirty-day extension on, I guess, the license fees that normally come due on April fifteenth, let them come due on May, but, yeah, just because of, uh, the payoffs, it's kind of affecting everybody, all these other businesses, sometimes, either survive through these closures and then also pay these, uh, my special license fees, and get there with a little time, so.
And the, the one-month extension for the occupational payroll things that are being paid, uh, if it won't affect us revenue-wise, just, it'll still be, I think, this one year, so this won't have any impact on us revenue-wise, just give them a little bit extra time to deal with any staffing issues that they may experience.
We haven't waited enough time, have we? Have you gone to the press, or?
Uh, the press, we can, we'll post it on, uh, personal page, but.
A lot of local CPAs are already asking about it, because they got people that are already, they're delaying their filing, because number one, they could get them to land up, two, they just got other things, front of them, it's more important to get them.
So should we, or would it be a burden to just send down something individually to the CPAs? I don't know, just asking the question, it'll probably be fairly easy, we're doing press from exotic anyway.
I think like the mayor said, they'll all be looking.
Yeah.
Doing the digital filing.
City alone will have their meeting, I think, people sort of, I think, the same thing, we're gonna do it tonight.
Mayor, do you have the, uh, verdicts for that motion, or who we need to get that from?
I think the motion would be that we are going to, uh, follow the, uh, guidelines of the IRS, uh, granting the extension, uh, filing of the, uh, net profit tax to July fifteenth or more than April fifteenth, they could also, they're gonna get a thirty-day, extension on the occupational license fee payment from April fifteenth to May fifteenth.
The thirty of April, or?
Excuse me, April thirty to May.
Thirty first.
May thirty first. What is net profits, the second, there's also occupational license fees. So we're gonna add a motion.
So.
Motion for Councilman Williams, the second, the second, Councilman Williams, is there any other discussion? Hall of favor, is he about to say no? Opposed, motion's carried. Okay, and then the next, uh, item is, uh, not paid on already, this from the year nineteen August.
Yes, stick to that.
So I received a draft, I got a copy of the draft, I'm ready. I set up to complete what's called an amendment, discussion, and announce this report, it detailed out, uh, several, just general operational plans that they do, that I have to happen throughout the year. Once this, once I get that finished, uh, I'll review the draft in detail and audit it, however, we're not gonna be able to release it. With this audit and the misappropriation of funds that were discovered, that was weird, there were audit comments and recommendations that detailed all the activity that occurred. We've been ordered by the investigators in this case, not sure the lease, that level of detail, that's coming in those comments, and they're further notice. So, uh, with that investigation ongoing, I'm not able to really give you the timeframe, and the office is gonna be available. But I did want to, I did want to assure you that I understand and I responded to the auditor's comments, and I've implemented, or have a plan for implementation to address all of the shortcomings that were part of the comments area in the city.
In other words, this document is a piece of evidence that they are still needing prior to, I think, their presentation to, they have said it this way, this is how I, they had talked about it in terms of evidence, but, uh, assuming it'll be part of their overall presentation to the grand jury, so you don't typically release evidence to the public to lead prior to submitting the case to the grand jury, so. The audit will be eventually released to the public with our comments and this recommendations from our auditor about fixing some of the problems that existed. So I think that's what Aaron's going to find. We've already addressed a number of issues that we brought out in the audit. We can't, per the request, be investigating police agency that don't release this at this time. And they met our auditor as well, basically, they heard the same orders they gave us. You have any questions on that? I mean, it's delayed because of all this, but we have to, I think, respectfully request for investigations to adhere to their request.
Just a general comment. You know, as, as we go through all this with the virus, I think we're all concerned, not only about our personal finances, but also about the cities that we're elected to represent. So I think tonight, to me, Aaron is our Andy Beshear at five o'clock, but he's here at seven thirty, so.
I think you're here, we'll find out more as we get the audit released, but also we get the budget. We are still very healthy. This is a major theft, but the city is still very sound. National security, great hands with Aaron Peter on board with the city. I feel better just knowing their projections and that you've analyzed there with it. He's a, he's a fast study on this stuff.
I get a character.
Okay, we've already gone over the fire department, I guess, ready? Next item is, uh, this order two thousand twenty dash zero four with the emergency F M L A, this order. Grand office, including this need to make this this order at this time.
So last week, the president signed the law of family's first coronavirus response act. And it comes in two parts. The first part is the emergency paid sick leave back. It certainly states that you have any employees that experience COVID nineteen symptoms or are caring for an individual with COVID nineteen symptoms. Or if they need childcare, they can take a N W emergency sick leave back. It is two weeks, eighty hours of paying for food. The second part of the act is the emergency family medical leave expansion act. It is F M L A, basically. And if you need to care for your child during COVID nineteen. This time period, you get up to two hundred dollars a day with a ten thousand dollar aggregate at two-thirds of your pay for however long it envelops the last act. Uh, that is, this is in effect until December thirty-first. So because of that law, we need to do the municipal order for the city of F M L A.
The guidance from K L C that you guys are implementing is to be in compliance with.
Right, this is a order straight from K L C O in sections three and four of the D A A.
And that does, and that allows part-time employees also, it kind of creates, makes work regret probably, creates a look back of six months to average their hours. Based on that, they can get two thirds of that, which is like a full-time employee. They just get two-thirds of what they average, you know, over that time. And there, we added this provision that the city is going to continue to be a hundred percent of their pay. So we're going to make up for the third to bring into a hundred percent of their pay. Is that correct, Greg?
Yes, yes.
And? Just a part-time.
That's for everyone.
For everyone. Um, and we have two part-timers and two of the three full-timers currently paid in the benefits of their comp.
So we don't have, we don't have a lot.
We do not.
Or you didn't know I could do anything from home, or?
We have, we have a few employees currently working from home, ones that can, um, uh, home, get on computer and get on our share of power. We have, we have two or three of those, but they were not on the side of the person that they're telling community. We have probably, or some that are alternating. We have some that are staying home one day and then another day. We have a few of them that are full-time, tell our community. Three, I think. The one, three that I know, three that I know, one that's staggering, you know, work on becoming a little bit. This is basically a required listing order based on the president's declarations.
Yes, sir.
Solicited K L C's advice on the draft. I guess Audrey, Virginia, we're going to share somehow how they did. So the motion to approve.
Venus full order M twenty twenty dash zero four, Venus full order providing for leave under the family's first coronavirus response act. Whereas the president signed into law the family's first coronavirus response act to assist with the impact of COVID nineteen. Employees may be eligible for additional leave under the law. And whereas to comply with temporary leave requirements, the city of F M L A has been altering its leave policy for city employees. Now therefore made ordered as follows. Number one, pursuant to the emergency paid sick leave back, all employees are eligible for two weeks of paid leave at their regular rate of pay for the following reason. Eligible full-time employee will receive up to eighty hours of paid sick leave. Eligible part-time employee will receive pay based on the average number of hours worked over the last six months. The act allows the employers to exclude healthcare providers and emergency responders from the definition of employees who are allowed to take such leave. Subject, A, subject to federal, state, or local quarantine or isolation order related to COVID nineteen. B, advised by a healthcare provider to self-quarantine due to COVID nineteen concerns. C, experiencing COVID nineteen symptoms and seeking medical diagnosis. D, caring for an individual subject to federal, state, or local quarantine or isolation order, or advised by a healthcare provider to self-quarantine due to COVID nineteen concerns. And caring for another who is subject to an isolation order or advised to self-quarantine and described above is not limited to only family members. E, caring for the employee's child if the child's school or place of care is closed, or the childcare provider is unable, unavailable due to COVID nineteen precautions. Or F, experiencing any other substantially similar conditions specified by the Secretary of Health and Human Services in consultation with the Secretary of the Treasury and Secretary of Labor. Two, pursuant to the emergency family medical leave expansion act, E F M L E A. An employee that has been employed for thirty days or more is eligible for twelve weeks of job protected leave to allow the employee who is unable to work or telework to care for the employee's child under eighteen years of age. If the child's school or place of care is closed, or the childcare provider is unavailable due to a public health emergency. The act allows the employer to stick with healthcare providers and emergency responders from the definition of employees who are allowed to take such leave. A, the first ten days of E F M L E A qualified leave are unpaid. Employee may either be eligible for emergency paid sick leave as outlined in paragraph one, or may take other paid leave currently with E F M L E A. B, beginning of the third week, given E F M L E A, eligible inflation will be paid according to the following. One, full-time employees, at two-thirds the employee's regular rate for the number of hours the employee would otherwise be normally scheduled. The E F M L E A limits this pay entitlement to two hundred dollars per day and ten thousand dollars in the aggregate per employee. Number two, employees who work part-time, a part-time or a regular schedule are entitled to be paid based on the average number of hours the employee worked for this six months prior to taking the E F M L A. Employees who had worked for less than six months prior to leaving are entitled to the employee's reasonable expectation and hiring of the average number of hours the employee would normally schedule to work. I think there's missing a sentence here, Gary, who isn't good. I don't have on my app that the revised one, McGregor, I started playing, I don't think.
Oh, the three and the four?
Yes.
You might have to refresh it.
I can, I've got three. You got it, Gary, because I don't have the part about that they're supposed to give two-thirds of their money. I had to refresh it, sorry.
Three, the city will pay full-time employees at one-third of the employee's regular rate, regular rate for the number of hours employees would otherwise normally be scheduled to ensure that full-time employees continue to receive a hundred percent of the regular rate. Four, the city will pay part-time employees and employees who work in irregular schedule at one-third of the employee's regular rate. Substituting the calculation of the employee's average hours set forth above to ensure that part-time employees continue to receive a hundred percent of the regular rate. C, the city will return to the employees, returning employees to their prior position according to the Restoration Department of F M L A. The city's F M L A leave is otherwise unchanged, and any D F M L E A leave will count for the employee's twelve weeks of job protected F M L A leave. The executive authorities shall determine which employees are eligible for continued work or total work based on the need capacity of the city. Or all other employees, meaning the rules shall remain in force. This order will terminate the expiration of the family's first coronavirus relief act currently set for December thirty-first.
The correction should be in paragraph two, though, and then you version out email to you. I don't know why it's not that one, but I can't read that section, Larry, just to get that corrected. And it doesn't make it clear, the, the model, the version that K L C sent didn't make it clear that part-time employees are actually getting two-thirds of their average if they're under paid with the full rate. So paragraph two B should say, uh, the first intention, employees who work at part-time or regular schedule entitled to be paid at two-thirds the employee's regular rate based on the average number of hours. And they're going to say, and for rest of that, just to make that clear, that we're not giving you the public beyond your full-time working condition there.
Thank you. Got you there.
All right. Thanks for the motion approved, I guess, order with the additions upon you to stage what you presented in your packet. This order two thousand twenty dash zero four. Senator, Mr. Counselor Buckland, second, second, Counselor O., any other discussion? All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion's carried.
I have one question, and I know this passive discussion is a little. One question, so this reads, Audrey, this reads that this would also trigger the event of federal, state, or local quarantine or isolation order. So if the governor issues a shelter in place, then the sick leave triggers at that point from where it's read.
In the, potentially, I suppose, but in most cases, it'd be like in most states, the governor has left an exemption for certain essential personnel. You know, so a lot of our, a lot of our employees would fall, would not be subject to that in the first responder, probably, you know, our, our guys on the garbage crew, the water plane, electric, those kind of folks. So I think a large number of our city employees, even under those circumstances, because we're providing essential services, would still be, Greg, do you think that's correct?
I think essentially, they would not include, so government would not, would always be the essential.
So if it triggers as, as an effect of the governor calling for a shelter in place, then how does, or just how does employment figure? So this, this, the way this reads, this triggers the sick leave back. If he orders a shelter in place, indeed.
For those employees that are, that are subject to that. Our employees would suffer. And we are such.
I would anticipate the governor's order would exclude you, you know, of the factor, not in the only team, so that it wouldn't trigger that action. Would you?
And that's.
Sorry, Mayor.
That's all right. Well, you know, the legal, a lot of the normal, you can say that there's a whole lot of this. This is tonight related to the coronavirus outbreak and the ever-changing orders that are coming in force to deal with. After very little, as. E nine eleven, this is something that they've been working on for quite some time. I dispatched the order, I think it's helpful that you can see the old agreement where they highlighted the red line changes that are in the new agreement. I'll just kind of, I've spent a lot of time talking to Joe Pruitt and the chief, both chiefs on this. As you can see, there's not a lot of substantial change to it with the exception of adding the word county to, instead of Nelson fiscal board, it's just a county fiscal board. There's a lot of divisions, the word A or uh, so forth. And then a couple of major changes, if you go down to words, membership officers, there, that language at the end of that paragraph. The interlocal agreement, who is going to chair the board for two years. That change there primarily was previously, I think, the chairman kind of rotated among all the member agencies. Where now it's going to be even the chief, place of bar shank, or there does leave on the sheriff for his destiny, as opposed to the, since, I think. The main reason behind that is those are the two largest agencies involved in the first fiscal report, the city of Barsham, paying the greatest sum of money. So in the expertise that sheriff carries as well as the chief, it lends itself to be more the chair of the dispatch board. As opposed to living from all the other, living to be a chair of that best. Major change there. And then towards the end of it, the management control, they wanted to be more clear about who had the authority to do the hiring. Dispatch personnel as well, as well as the dispatch executive director of dispatch. And now there's a personnel committee that is appointed to, to do that, make a recommendation to the full. Then the full board approves hiring staff as well as the director. That seems to be the main points, with the exception of, let's say, some of the other workers that have been the leader, just changed. And they spent a lot, a lot of time on this. Most chiefs and I spent a lot of time, and we think it's, the agreement is a much better agreement than one that was created when they first switched to the. It was formally called a joint board, it's not a joint, it's a county block, and it changed that as well. Unless anybody's got any questions. Chief Van is there, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Does it address percentages paid by city?
Yes, there's a, I forget what exactly it is, but I think we're limited to the lesser of a hundred and thirty thousand or ten forty percent per hour. Yeah, that's, it's the lesser, that's safe to say. There's no other questions or, I would ask the motion that would approve the device, interlocal agreement for the operation of the Nelson County dispatch. So most of our council checkers, then the second. Second, second, Councilman P. Is, any other discussion? Your favor, tired. Let's get your gun out, you have to. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion's carried. We're going to table the fire truck discussion that I told the chief, first, it was weeks ago, I said we could do it, but that's more of a level discussion anyway. I said we don't need to get into that tonight, so we're going to table that. And the last thing we might want, a lot of the blow is bringing up twenty twenty census compared to the others that's going on. But the census just happened to be released literally days before this thing really hit us. And so how, how long is that? People are going to be met with the reasonable person in charge of the, Jan Johnson is our local person who's overseeing the twenty twenty census. But the point of reading this up tonight is, is that most everybody should have already received a letter like this to your house. Very few people are going to be like the old days when they came knocking on your door, clipboard, filling out a bill. This is a guideline on how you can do it online. You get into it, you've got your own little ID number, it takes less than ten minutes to complete. And you don't have to be real savvy with IT to do it. If you can, now there's so many people home right now, hopefully you have time over here, and this is a great time to be doing it. I mean, if you can shop on Amazon online, and Netflix, you can definitely fill this out. It's not very different. The overriding importance of this is we need an accurate count from Nelson County. The numbers for the state, based on population, and the federal dollars that are predicated on the accurate count equal two thousand dollars per person. Now, somebody might say, well, I would get a check from the federal government to two thousand, but when you aggregate all. But when you aggregate all the federal funding that comes into Kentucky right now per capita, it equals two thousand dollars per person. So you've got road funds, you've got funds for school, cities and counties get funded. You've got a lot of the programs like unemployment, all those things. So it's imperative that we get an accurate count. So I can emphasize to everybody here and all those that are watching this, uh, meeting tonight to please take the time to open the mail and, uh, complete the census because it's vital to, uh, the operations for so many agencies here in Barstown and, uh, yeah. I did it at lunch the other day. I had the news on. I did this at lunch, at lunch. I didn't have a newspaper laying there too. So it's not, not that difficult. Of course, my house, I always have like two things and stuff. And that's a pretty simple tool and stuff. Uh, but they really want to get this down. I think probably in the paper. So it's very, fill that out. We'd appreciate everybody's, um, cooperation.
They got, I don't know if people's do that. No, I found that. I said a quick question. I don't know if anybody else has been asked about, you know, these stimulus checks that we're going out there.
And that's not on the agenda.
All right. This is special need.
Yeah.
We were required to call a special need, compile it because we need to do that.
Cool down.
All right. All right. Mayor, since the census is on, we filled out hours to that.
Thank you.
So that's two of them.
If my sentence is.
Hope the rest of the, maybe some of the, there's no other, uh, things, of course, we can't bring up any new business. I hope there's not on the agenda. So I'd ask for motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion, my counsel, Williams and second, like the ten, my counsel, Clark. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Most carry. Well, thank you all for your kindness evening.